Mr. Stembridge.
Present, Madam Chair.
Mr. Valencia.
Valencia.
Ms. Bedebraza. Ms. Turner.
Turner.
Ms. Panado.
Present, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Bedebraza. Okay. Maybe you can start, Mr. Stembridge, and she will join us.
Okay, Madam Chair. Um, we left off at the eleven o'clock cases. Uh, the last two, which were companion cases, were deferred until June third. So that will take us to the rediscussion cases scheduled for eleven thirty. And even though we asked for or ask again if there are any requests for withdrawals from the eleven thirty time stamp? Hearing none, then we will begin with the first two cases, which are companion cases scheduled for eleven thirty, which are case BOA one six nine zero four eight two with the address of ninety to ninety-two Perthshire Road. And along with that, we have case BOA one six nine zero four eight four with the address of ninety-four to one hundred Perthshire Road.
Okay, I'll just, uh, I would just ask if Ms. Bedebraza is back with us?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Onto the applicant.
Then with that, we'll ask if the applicant, uh, for these and/or their representative are present for these cases?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of one sixty-eight Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the applicant Patrick McKenna and the project architect San Giolo. The current site consists of an existing single structure on a twenty thousand and fifty square foot lot, which will raise to erect a two new multifamily buildings with town-style homes on the same parcel with an address of ninety to ninety-two Perthshire Road. And the second falling address will be ninety-four to one hundred Perthshire Road. The plan for ninety to ninety-two Perthshire Road will be to erect a new two-and-a-half-story, two-unit residential building that will each contain three bedrooms. The plan for ninety-four through one hundred Perthshire Road will be to erect a new two-and-a-half-story, four-unit residential building that will each contain three bedrooms as well. There will be a total of eight grade parking spaces located in the middle of the two buildings. Parking will be accessed by relocating an existing curb cut to the left-hand side of the parcel with a width of twelve point two feet, but will have over a twenty-foot wide accessway to the rear four units for fire access. The proposal is located within a two-F five-thousand sub-district. All six units will be approximately one thousand square feet, containing a dining room, living room, bath and a bedroom on the first floor. Second floor will contain two bedrooms, two baths, and the half-story will contain a small office space. Basins will contain utilities and storage. We have the following violations for ninety to ninety-two Perthshire Road: front yard setback. The minimum required setback is twenty feet, and the proposal is at approximately ten point one feet, which aligns with the modal setback in the area and would bring this project into consistency with the surrounding area. We have two violations for off-street parking. First, the parking ratio in this area is one point seven five per new unit of housing, and the project total calls for eight parking spaces between the six units. However, the site is point three miles away from Oak Square, which provides multiple MBTA bus routes. Further, this proposal is aligned with the mayor's initiative of reducing dependency on private vehicles. Second, Article fifty-one dash fifty-six point five requires fifty percent of the proposed parking spaces to be at least seven feet by eighteen feet, while the remaining must be at least eight point five feet by twenty feet. The proposal design calls for one at twelve feet by nineteen feet and the other seven at nine feet by nineteen feet, which, if approved, the design of those spaces could be addressed during design review. Two or more dwelling units on the same lot. No dwelling should be built behind another on the same parcel. However, the proposed buildings exceed the required spacing. The minimum side yard is ten feet, and the proposed distance between the two buildings is more than twenty feet. Lastly, the unique shape of this lot makes it different to create a different layout, as the lot is two hundred and three feet long and has a frontage of only sixty-seven point eight nine feet. This layout makes it a viable option for maximizing the lot's use for the creation of new housing. The proposed FAR is a point eight, and we are at a point, point five, what is, what is allowed by code. Hold on, I'm so sorry, disregard that one. That was a, an error on my end, disregard that last comment. Building height is under the code at twenty-eight point eight. Sorry. Hold on, one sec, one second, I just bear with me one second. All right, okay, so those are the four violations for that. We're moving on to the next violations for ninety-four through one hundred Perthshire Road. Uh, we have a use violation. This proposal falls within a two-F sub-district, and the total amount of units being proposed is six units on a very large parcel, which is forbidden, but aligned with the planning goals to increase the housing stock. We have a floor area ratio violation, this is what I was getting at. A point six is compliant within this sub-district, and the proposal calls for a point seven five, which is consistent to most lots in this area. We do have a, we are compliant in the feet, um, as we are at thirty-five feet, but we do have a slight violation in stories, um, at this, at this parcel. This building, the site's grade change mitigates any height concerns at this portion of the lot, which sits at the lower grade than the area front in Perthshire Road. So as you can see from that elevation, we are at three stories there at a portion of it. Uh, we do have a rear setback violation. Thirty feet is required, and the project proposes sixteen feet. Uh, we have a lot width minimum. Fifty feet is required, and the project proposed a lot width of sixty-eight point two-two feet, which was cited because the shared driveway includes its walkways as two hundred feet, which does not meet the five-hundred-foot requirement. However, under Article two, the lot width is defined as the shortest horizontal distance between the side lot lines, and this definition does not exclude driveways. Therefore, this should not have been cited. Uh, again, we have two or more dwellings on a lot, uh, for the reasons previously stated. Off-street parking design, uh, front yard parking shall not be located in any part of the front yard. However, due to the design of this project, the shared parking placed between the two structures which resulted in this violation. Uh, again, we have another off-street parking insufficiency, again, for the same reasons as previously stated. And lastly, we have conformity of the existing building alignment. The lot size and the frontage make it difficult to conform. It would not be feasible for all six of these units to front Perthshire Road. Uh, given that information, Madam Chair, I'm gonna turn it back over to the board and, and apologize for the, uh, for the misconstruing some of those violations at the beginning of this.
Are there any questions from the board?
Are, are there any other, uh, images here, plans?
Yep, there's, so you, you have the full set of plans if, if, um, she keeps.
Yeah, just, could you just page through them, thank you.
Yeah, it just would be helpful if you had talked while you were.
Do you want me to walk through the design?
Yeah, we, we have Mark San Giolo that can typically, um, you know, he can run through the quick design of the building itself, um, here. Um, I know in, in, in the past, I think, I think, um, the, the, the person who's handling this, Lisa, at this point, I think she's fairly new to scrolling through the drawings. Typically is when I make presentations, they usually just scroll through to, to show you. So, next time, I'll, I'll be more aware of that, and I can just highlight specific pages as I go through my presentation. So, Mark, if you wanted to just kind of run through the design bit.
Yeah, and how, how does fire access, access that back building?
So, on the left-hand side of that driveway, there is a twenty-foot wide accessway, which is required by the code in order to access the rear, and we are compliant under the fire code.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, why don't we start right here with a drawing, A two. This drawing shows, uh, some neighborhood context and kind of shows a density, a relationship between our project and the rest of the neighborhood. You can see it's sort of in line with the density of the rest of the neighborhood. And what we strove for, we originally had proposed nine units that were kind of modern, small, uh, houses, and, uh, the, the neighbors really didn't want anything to do with that, so we scaled back to six and made it more contextual, uh, project. If we go to the next slide. So you can, you can see the, um, the elevations of the project, and on top, there's an overview, uh, next slide. Uh, some more elevations, and go to the next. Some of the, the units are, um, um, twenty by fifty, so they're a thousand square feet per, uh, for each footprint. They're relatively, um, small units, uh, twenty, twenty-three sixty-five on the front and a twenty-five hundred on the rear. And we'll go to the next. That's the last one, let's go back up to the site, the colored site plan. So right here, you can, and, yeah, you can, that, yeah. So here, you can see an image of the, um, of what we're proposing. The idea was to do something very contextual on the street, which blended into the neighborhood, access drive on the left, and centralized the parking, so it wouldn't be completely visible from the street. It actually works out pretty well for the site design. Go down to the next slide. So here you see, uh, the landscape plan, the access drive on the left, the centralized parking, the townhouse units, the four townhouse units in the rear, and the two in the front. The site slopes about ten feet from the front to the back, so the, um, the rear units are kind of like a walkout, uh, situation on the rear. That's about it, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Ciggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, which was heavily attended and which prompted a revised proposal. A second abutters meeting was held on August seventh, twenty twenty-four, at which concerns persisted about insufficient parking, that the proposal involves building too close to the property line, and the loss of a mature tree. The proposal was presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which is the active civic group in this area, and that group is in support. With that background, we defer judgment to the board, thank you.
There's one hand raised, Annabella.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. The applicant presented to the BIA twice. First, uh, they presented, and there was concerns with the tree, the driveway location, the trash, the parking, and how it was set. Uh, they went back, they moved the driveway to the other side, which was requested by the neighbors. They saved one of the trees. They trimmed, they worked on the trash locations, um, they worked on the parking. And, um, for the most part, the neighbors came back to the second meeting and were pretty much happy with the work that, uh, they made to change to accommodate their requests, and the BIA voted to support this. We are very much in support, we like this project, 'cause it does provide family-style housing that is much needed in the neighborhood. Thank you.
There's no other hands.
And that may have a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve with, uh, Planning Department Design Review. Uh, it seems like there may be some need to take a look at the walkway to the units and the shared parking and increasing permeable surfaces.
Wait a second.
Okay.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza.
I, I'm gonna vote no, um, for the zoning violation of, uh, building two, two separate units on one lot. Um, looking at the site plan, it looked, um, not to be in context with the neighborhood's typologies. I think you can do a, a larger kind of dense building, uh, and it being sited better.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Next rule, the next case is BOA one six one five zero seven one with the address of ninety-three Howard Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative, are they present?
Present, please.
Go.
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, everyone, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, been here since like nine, since eleven-thirty, must've been a long day for everyone. Um, I'm here to present again, uh, for ninety-three Howard Avenue. Um, this was a, uh, this is my property that I would like to, um, build, uh, nine units. Would you guys like me to share my screens a bit?
So you cannot share your screen, but you can walk us through the plans that you submitted?
Um, I submit plans to, um, develop, um, on my lot, which is parcel one. I'm moving, we zoom in here, yep, parcel one. And, uh, and it's to build nine units, uh, originally. Uh, when I went through the zoning and civic meeting, I got, um, uh, overwhelming support, uh, from DS and I, uh, overwhelming support from the neighborhood. Um, and as I mentioned in my previous meeting, uh, my biggest concern was my neighbor to my right, if I'm standing directly at my property, um.
Were there slides, are there specific slides you wanna direct?
I'm not sure what you can see.
I, we see what you submitted, so I, that's all I, that's all I can say, we're looking at it.
I'm on page, um, yeah, I'm on page one, um, if you go to page seven, you can see what it, what it looks like. So, you asked me for a specific size, is something that in particular that you're looking, looking for?
We just want something to look at while you're talking that makes sense with what you're talking about. So, please feel free to proceed.
Uh, are you, are you seeing the nine units? I guess I'm asking that.
Are you looking at the screen like we are, or are you not looking at the screen?
The only screen that I can see is your face.
Okay, well, I think, I'm, I'm not sure what to say other than maybe to change your view, how you're viewing the screen, because the, your presentation is up.
So I don't see.
There's a, there's a little button that says view on the top right, and, uh, you can do like side-by-side gallery or standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you move your arrow to the top, you'll see that view tapping.
So when I see view, I see gallery, and when I, when I select gallery, I just see everyone's face, I don't see into the drawing.
So, side-by-side, side-by-side gallery, and you can see.
I don't have an option for a side-by-side gallery? It's just showing me speaker, gallery, and then it goes into high self-view.
Is he a not, is he not promoted as a panelist, is that why?
No, he's a panelist.
Okay, well, is there a standard? I, I mean, I'm on standard, which shows me the plans.
If I may interject, I'm not sure how he would enter the room. I, I was asked to send the link, uh, so I sent the copy link from the events page. I'm not sure if that may help him out with any information.
Not sure, um.
He is a panelist.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I'm not the Zoom guru here, so if anybody knows how to get him into view, that would be helpful. You can, okay, Cameron says to try signing in and out.
Um, now, what link would I be using to sign in and out?
I have none.
That's it.
I will copy this link.
Yes, Stephanie.
This is Stephanie, can I make a suggestion?
Please.
Um, Gary, Gary, if you have your plans up, can you just let staff know to go to A, A one dot four? So we're looking at the same thing that you're looking at? Like the same page on the plan? Do you have a copy of your plans up that you're looking at?
Me, are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I do have a copy of my fans on my computer, yes.
So, at the bottom of your plan, it has like A one dot four, or whatever page. Can you just let staff know what page to go to? So we're looking at the same thing that you're looking at as you.
Right, so I'm looking at, uh, maybe that helps. I'm looking at A one dot three right now, so if I scroll, scroll back up to the beginning, which is D O dot zero. Is that helpful?
So right now she has A one dot three up.
A one dot three. A one dot three, you're showing me the third floor plan? Are you seeing a third floor plan for A one dot three? Yes. All right, perfect. So, um, I guess I would like to start with D O dot zero, and then I can work my way down, and as I am, I'll, I'll keep you, I'll let you guys know what I'm looking at, is that all right with everyone?
Yep, perfect, thank you.
All right, perfect, so, um, so originally, um, the, the plan was to build, uh, to, to knock down, um, my existing, um, uh, property and build twelve units, and that was approved, the civic and community meetings, um, everybody, you know, supported me. DS and I supported me, my neighborhood supported me. Um, the only pushback that I received, uh, was to the matriarch of our neighborhood, which is Mrs. Avery, and, uh, she's to the right of me. Uh, if I'm standing directly at the property, um, and it wasn't pushback in a way of just, you know, saying no. It was more so in a, in a way of, uh, for respect for her. She said, you know, she called me Eddie, she was like, hey, you know, if you, if you take down, you know, your, your family's property, it'd be a lot of noise, um, and she's elderly, and I respected that. I said, all right, got it, um. Came back, took a look at it, say, hey, look, instead of just, you know, making this twelve units, we'll go to nine, uh, we don't have to, you know, we don't have to do a demo. Um, and just that was out of respect for her, uh, so I came back here, you guys deferred it out, because, um, you, you originally wasn't reviewed through zoning. I met, um, I went, I met with Mark, I met with, um, uh, Mr. Williams, Paul Williams, um, in terms of the commissioners and deputies, and let them know, hey, look, this is what I'm, this is my, um, changes, my.
What's, what's your current proposal? Can you start walking?
My, my current proposal is just, if we get the twelve units up, um, everything's been approved, I've got the support, it's just been deferred out several times on, on your end, um.
Twelve units or nine units? Because on, on our agenda, we have nine units, so.
Nine units, correct, sorry, my apologies.
Can you just walk through the violations?
Um, the violations was parking, um, we are, um, let me get exactly to it. Uh, we are addressing the parking situation, uh, we do have parking in the rear. Um, there'll be three parking spots, um, the spacing in terms of height, um, we, we're addressing that by, uh, digging lower, so it'll be in compliance. Um, and my architect was here earlier, um, I'm just, just because of how the day planned out, um, he had, you know, other business to attend to, so I'm the only one here.
I'm on currently.
Who, Jason, is that you?
Okay, will you, can someone, can someone answer here?
Uh, yes.
Miss Johnson's question? Can someone please answer the board member's question about what the violations are?
Yes, uh, sorry, uh, so there's a violation for off-street parking, or it's parking in the, uh, in, uh, uh, parking size. Um, we are deficient, uh, in number of parking spaces. We're proposing, uh, nine dwelling units and three, and I guess if you go down a slide, you can see that. You can see the three unit, uh, three parking, uh, spaces that we're proposing at the rear of the building. Um, so those are the parking issues. We are a bit excessive on our FAR, I think, uh, I think point eight is, uh, permitted. I think we're at one. Um, we're a little deficient on our usable open space. We are within the, excuse me, we're outside of the side yard setbacks, so that's another relief item we're looking at. Um, and then other than that, it's really just the, uh, the density and the, uh, front yard, yard side, side, uh, setback that we're looking at.
Um, so you mentioned parking, so you're at three, and how many are required?
Uh, we are required to have nine spaces.
Okay.
Got nine, nine dwell. Got nine, nine dwelling units and nine spaces. Um, because the units are only one-bed units, we feel as if, uh, we feel that it, it accurately represents the deficiency. Um, again, we've, we've got nine, uh, single-bed units and three parking spaces provided.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, mere public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to request a deferral for the purpose of furthering community process regarding changes to the proposal. The proponent did present to a barter zone to the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative approximately one year ago. Uh, due to the time and changes that have, uh, been made, uh, and not been presented to the community, our office believes further community pro, community process would allow for the Dudley Square Neighborhood Association and community to review the changes.
Mr. Bembry, just to be, just to be clear, just to be clear, he's been presenting twelve, twelve and not the nine, and that's, that's why you're requesting the deferral?
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Other raise hands?
No, raise your hand.
Yeah, say your name, uh. Say your name. Can you state your name, that's for the record? Say your name. Danny Avon.
Okay. Hi, my name is Danny Avon.
From eighty-seven, how?
In our little eighty-seventh Howard Avenue. Not just.
State here.
And I'm just listening to Mr. Barbosa speaking. This is, this is the first time that Mr. Barbosa said anything about changing, about anything. Only thing that I discussed with Mr. Barbosa is when he removed my property line and jammed his fat against my fence when I wasn't home. And I just discussed that with him. And he didn't say anything about he was changing or gonna have apartment building, because he don't have no space. All I could do were. So that's what I was concerned about, about this space. Thank you, ma'am. And the parking. Cause when he, in his driveway is a little my property. So that was, you know, I didn't know he was changing. I would let that, you know, slide, but he didn't say anything about, cause his property is just like a, a big rock. So is it gonna be a lot of blasting or whatever? And then he don't have enough space. Why he gonna put these units, even nine, definitely twelve? And but Mr. Barbosa had even discussed that with me. And I couldn't, you know, explain to him, but he's a nice fellow. All that, all this stuff is new. And I've been here, it's been my property like sixty-two years. So when Mr. Barbosa moved here, he was baby.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
I wanted to change. You know, I, I don't know, I can't understand where he gonna put all of these units or what, so.
We, thank you.
If he had explained, like, if he had talked to me, he had even, didn't even talk to me about it. And I was just telling him, trying to tell him the law and everything, how he put his fat, jammed it over against my fence after he done moved the property line. And I took him next door to show him how the property line is lined.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hampton, are you on? Can you shed some light?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Uh, we haven't seen a new, if you use a letter from ISD, nor the new plans for nine units. Our original recommendation for this project, that twelve-unit count was for a denial without prejudice. And we base that a lot because the, uh, the size of the building, the height of the building was the reasoning for it. And since we haven't seen, uh, the new plans or letter from ISD, nor, uh, sent you a recommendation on the new proposal, I'd like to echo, uh, the sentiment of ONS and ask her a deferral on this case.
So I, my question about that is, I, I reached out to you guys several times. I've been, been to ISD twice. I spoke to both commissioners, the deputy commissioner, and they were both approved, and it seems like the ball was dropped on your end. Um, and, and it's a bit frustrating to me. Um, I started this process about a year ago. And, and when I, when I, there was, I didn't receive a denial. It was never denied. I was never informed of a denial. Um, and, and again, my, while I'm back here is, I, Mrs. Abrams, how you doing? It's Eddie here. Um, I didn't notice she was on. Uh, my reasoning for the change was strictly because of my neighbor and, and the, and the noise and respect for her. Um, so for you to tell me here that, you know, you didn't receive the changes is very frustrating.
Sir, if, if you make changes to your project and what you submit, you need to go through the community process, so.
I did, I did. I went through, I, I, I went through it, and again, they told me specifically that since I'm decreasing the number of units, that this is fine. Again, I spoke with Paul Williams.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I'm not here to debate the merits of that, sir, but according to ONS, uh, and your abutter, that has not been the case. So, uh, but in any case, are there any other public comments before we proceed? Lisa?
No, there's no other hands raised.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
I mean, not questions, but I think that, um, if we were to defer this case, um, I would encourage, um, uh, Stephanie as well, um, to coordinate with Barbosa and to let him know that he would need to resubmit these plans, uh, with the updated reduction of unit. Uh, but to, for him to, i- i- if someone can assist him, um, because there is merit for his reduction and his conversation, maybe this is an opportunity as well, Mr. Barbosa, to just talk to your neighbor. But at least we heard her present in terms of a testimony. Um, I, I, I would encourage that there be more communication to help this applicant.
With that, Mr. Bembry?
I've been up, going forward, I've been up to the zoning board three times with an attorney on three different occasions and spoke to both of your commissioners about this. And I'm very frustrated about that process. I, I, you guys dropped the ball. I'm, I'm frustrated and I, I, I've waited here for, you know, three, three hours to be heard, and, and it seems a bit, you know, a bit frustrating to me and, and, and I would like to express my, you know, I don't know, just frustration. But, um, again, not mad at you guys, just the process within itself. Like, I, I, I submit this, I met with you guys, I physically went up there with an attorney twice. Twice. Sat in that office in ISD. I took days, time out of my days to go sit up there, to, to come and meet here and for you guys to tell me that you defer because you don't believe that you have the plans, which I emailed it to you and physically walked it up there and met with both commissioners. And they had it, they looked at it, we looked at it together, ISD.
Thank, thank you, sir. Noted, noted.
So I, I would like to make a motion, um, to defer, but to get the next hearing for Mr. Barbosa. And hopefully his process can be expedited.
Well, Ms. Better Barazza, I don't even know if we're gonna have time to do that because the next hearing is next Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, so you need a month to review?
I, I, we need a couple of weeks. I mean, we're still doing the stuff for next week. And I get a new plan in, you know, I, I would suggest maybe, what's the, uh, the next Tuesday, the twentieth, May twentieth?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna bring back up Mr. Bembry.
But I don't get to make those choices, right? That's up to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bembry if he's still on, because he asked for a deferral because of community process. So I'd like to understand how much time is needed for that. I don't think it's just a matter of BPDA or BPD getting updated plans. It sounds to me like the neighbors haven't heard this new version, so it would not be who, the applicant, to come to an immediate hearing without that piece having occurred.
Uh, yes, um, Madam Chair, we do request that the proponent visit the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative uh, and present the changes, uh, to the civic association. Uh, we do feel that, uh, that would be the, that would satisfy the community process.
And when is their next meeting?
Um, that information would have to be gathered, or we did not gather the information before the meeting.
Understood, but it's not going to be in the next week or two. Let's, does that sound about right?
That, I would assume to be accurate, yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, so, so perhaps we can look at another date, Stephanie, that allows for this piece of the process?
Uh, excuse me, Madam Chair. So just to be clear, we would need one community meet, one additional community meeting. Um, obviously forwarding the plans to the BPD, to the planning department. Um, and ISD has the plans. Is there anything else needed here that we, that might, that I'm missing?
No, I mean, we do have, we did hear the testimony. We do have the plans in front of us. What we don't have is BPD's recommendation, but we could make a, um, a motion.
And, and additional community input also, right?
Yes, that is what I heard.
Okay, so.
My, my concern, my, I'm sorry, my concern is that you're asking for something that's already.
So this is, this is for the board members at this time, sir. This is for the board.
Oh, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Jeff just said that he didn't have the plans, and this, Ms. Ms. Better just said that we're looking at the plans. This is, this, you guys are contradicting yourselves.
Yeah, but, but.
Sir.
But I've been six hours.
Sorry for the frustration, Andrew. We're trying to take care of this, okay? So. Go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Sturridge. Okay, so let's have a motion with a date. We need a date from Stephanie.
Uh, I'm sorry, but we, Jeremy has something to say.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Bembry.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I do believe that they, they meet the last Thursday of the month.
Okay, so that would be late May. So we're talking about the earliest of, it's June, so Stephanie had mentioned several June dates.
May.
It would have to be, um, June third. June third is the earliest June date.
That's the earliest, okay.
Uh huh.
So who is making that motion about deferral?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of deferral for June third.
Second.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Ms. Stone, one quick question, and I appreciate everybody, um, Madam Stone, uh, so the deferral will be to June third. In the meantime, between, um, I know we didn't get a date for a community meeting. Should I just?
So what I heard is for you to read, I suggest you reach out to Mr. Bembry, uh, to work with the civic, to get on that next agenda. And it sounds like BPD needs those plans, which they do not have. Uh, and I think that's what I heard.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, a couple of things. Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't hear. The, um, next DS and I meeting is the twenty-eighth of May, so that's why we said June third. Um,
Can we, can we?
And we, if, I'm not sure, I know this will be a rediscussion, but can we move this up to nine, to the first case of nine-thirty hearings? Um, so it, so he and we don't have to wait to go through all this later in the day again?
That's a great point. Uh, and I'm, that's, that's a, that's a staffing question, uh, in terms of just.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Stephanie. It's fine to do a rediscussion till nine-thirty.
Great, thank you.
You just have to make that announcement.
And I'll give questions. Stephanie is the question. She's, she's, she was suggesting, yes.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, and I would say in the, I would, I would say in the meantime, Mr. Barbosa, it's okay for you to also go out of your way to meet with your abutters, just in case anything.
No, I certainly.
In case anything happens with association, we know your, your liaison has advocated on your behalf and you just, and you just checked all the boxes, then you should be good to go on June third.
Thank you. Um, and I'll certainly meet with, uh, my, my neighbors. I appreciate y'all's time. Sorry for the frustration. I'm gonna just rest in here today. It's, it's just been a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one six five three one eight two with the address of fifty-nine Worcester Street. Uh, I'll defer to Attorney Scott, this one?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, I'm a business adjuster on fifty-one Dobson Road. Um, we're here today, um, and with me today is Mr. Jose Guzman, who's the E, architect for the project. We're here today seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a two-family dwelling to four residential units. The zoning sub-district here is, is, is multifamily residential. And our lot size is two thousand one hundred sixteen square feet. Um, and our zoning violations are as follows. FAR, the, the required FAR is two point oh. We are proposing two point three. Um, with regard to the rear yard setback, uh, rear yard setback requirement is twenty feet. We are proposing seventeen feet. I'll turn it over to Jose, and he can go through the plans, and I think most of the questions will be answered within that. Jose? Yeah, it's still.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Guzman. I'm the architect of record on the fifty-nine Worcester Street project. Uh, the project at the front is, uh, three and a half stories. At the rear, uh, elevation drops, and it reads as additional story. It's, it's a walkout basement at the rear. It has, um, dormers at the front of the building and with emergency escape, uh, railings, uh, at the, at the, on the front and at the rear. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Derek Small said, it's currently zone, uh, a two-family, and we're looking to convert it to a four-one-bedroom apartments. The, if you go to the next, the next drawing.
Next slide.
So here's, we're proposing three parking spaces at the rear. It's this, uh, the rear, like I said, is one story lower than the front. And we just go to the next one. Uh, apparent, at some point, uh, the, the two-family was converted to a multifamily. Uh, and, and the basement, there was a studio apartment and mechanical room at the front. We are doing away with the, the studio apartment and making it storage. If you go to the next slide, skip this, uh.
Yeah, so there's no living space in the basement.
Yeah, so let's go to the next, next slide, next page, please. Next one? Okay, so here, uh, are the proposed elevations. They're, uh, no, this is existing, sorry. Keep, keep going? Not one more? These are all existing conditions, right? Okay, here we go. So this is the proposed basement. You can see that it's, uh, there's a storage at the rear with a rear entrance. Uh, paved, uh, back courtyard with parking. Uh, and then we have at the front of the building, we, we have a mechanical room with laundry room and additional storage and a sprinkler room. On the, on the first floor is the first unit. It's a, it's a one-bedroom with a walkout porch at the back. So that's what we're proposing, a, uh, a porch on every level with a exit stairway going from the upper level down to grade. The second floor is almost like, it's identical to, almost identical to the first floor. It's again, it's a one-bedroom with, uh, a porch. We go to the next slide, next, okay. And then on the, on the third floor, it's, uh, again, a one-bedroom with a living space and a walkout porch. Uh, with a single stair, uh, that goes down to the grade. And then at the upper level is a smaller unit. Because it's a smaller unit because at the front, uh, it's a massive roof. And so, uh, the square footage is less than the, than the lower levels. Then we go to the next, next photo. This is a, uh, section, can we go to the section, eight two point two? So the front of the building is to your left, uh, and, and that's Worcester Street. On, on the right is the alley. It provides access to the parking, to the three parking spaces with the steel, uh, staircases that goes up to the upper levels. to the upper levels, uh, with, and that they are also porches. Uh, we are proposing a shed roof at the rear of the, of, of the building that runs the full width of the building. There are currently shed dormers, uh, on the two adjacent neighbors, and on the front, we're gonna keep the existing, uh, dormers as they are. No changes to the front facade. Other than to introduce, uh, uh, railing for the, for the stoop, it's ornamental. Next, next slide, next, please. So this is, uh, the front of the building, uh. Uh, you can see here that we, there's some notations, but basically we're putting in new windows, uh, painted black, there, there can be black windows, insulated windows, it's, it's already been reviewed and approved by historical commission. So both the front and the back, they've reviewed it, and, uh, next slide. And this is the rear, you're looking at the rear with, uh, the new steel porch. Uh, it goes all to all from the basement level that's like gray, all the way up to the upper level to the roof. And you can see here the proposed dormer that is from side to side, and on each side, there are existing, uh, shed dormers. So, uh, do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Just, just one last note, Madam Chair, we did go before the South End landmarks, and the railings, the windows, and the rear dormers were all approved. South End landmarks.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding fifty-nine Worcester Street. Our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on eight nineteen twenty-four, which was attended by about six constituents. Uh, the primary feedback from this meeting was concerns about the historical character of the neighborhood in regards to the dormer being built on the front of the house and affecting the historical look of the building. Uh, but there was also support expressed by, uh, the constituents believing that this was a good fit for the community and the neighborhood. Uh, additionally, the proposal was, uh, reviewed and met with the Hurley Block Neighborhood Association, and at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment, thank you for your time and consideration on this.
Thank you.
There's no other hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval?
Is there a second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, enjoy your day.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, see you some of the years.
Have a good day, folks.
Recording stopped.